I would like to welcome everyone to the Town of Lexington's Special Call Work Session Meeting. This meeting is being held at Town Hall Monday evening, April the 24th, I mean 29th, 2024, in council chambers. I will now call the Special Work Session Meeting to order. Are there any deletions on tonight's agenda? Unless we're deleting the budget, I guess there's not any, right? This new business will be placed on the May 6th council meeting for title reading only for the budget for the Town of Lexington. And I'm going to turn that over to the town administrator to start this.
I am here to do a very brief overview for you all of the proposed fiscal year 2025 budget for the Town of Lexington. This has definitely been a group effort. Couldn't have done this without Stuart Ford, Chad Melvin, Lorraine Weider, and of course, Kathy Farr. Thank you all. We are happy to present to you tonight a balanced budget that includes no property tax increase. A value of the mill has increased, as it typically does. The one-mill value is 168,867. This has increased over FY '24, which is 159,272. This budget includes a 5.5% cost of living for all employees, plus the merit policy, pardon me, merit increase per our policy. This also includes an adjustment for all of our pay grades. We've bumped each of our pay grades up by 2,500. As a result, all the steps along the way are increased as well. This budget, on the general fund side, includes four full-time equivalents. All four are in our Parks and Sanitation Department as ground maintenance workers. We're proposing hiring two in July and then two more in January. This is as a result of taking on the new parks and the many improvements that we've made around town. You'll notice throughout the budget, there are certain areas that are increased over last year. For example, in almost every department, our contractual services have increased. And for the most part, this is related to technology and the contracts that we have with them. It also includes contractual costs for hiring and onboarding new personnel. You'll notice that is the same with uniforms in certain departments. It increases, includes a 3.4% increase in our building permit fees, dog park fees, and facility rentals. This is related directly to CPI increase. On our enterprise fund side, this includes funding not only all of our existing positions, but also adding one new full-time equivalent position, which would be an electrician. Having one on staff would be greatly utilized not only by our utilities department, but would provide consulting-type services to the remainder of our departments. It includes a 3.5% rate increase for both water and wastewater. It includes a fully funded capital improvement plan for the year. It allows us to rename a number of positions within the department to better describe the work performed and to make them accessible and to, like, their peers in the private sector. So instead of maintenance technicians, they will be utility technicians and work in their various water and wastewater areas. It builds in pay incentives for our employees to achieve certifications and allows them to increase in their role and responsibility. This emphasizes getting operator D, operator C, B, and A certifications. You'll see that we've increased travel and training for all of the employees in this department to assist with providing study materials for them and certification testing so that we can help support them along the way. It'll benefit our employees and it'll benefit our town residents because we will have highly skilled operators working in and around the community. And it will help to fill the positions that we have open and build in longevity and succession planning for the future. These are just some of the highlights. I'm going to turn it over to our Finance Director, Kathy Farr, and she'll provide a little bit more detailed information for you about the numbers and what's contained in the budget.
Sure you can. And first of all, welcome. We know you've been going through a preparation, and we appreciate you being here tonight.
I'm glad to be here. So, um, we've got a PDF that I think Michael's going to put up, but you've got a hard copy that you can read as well, whichever way you want to get it. So the first sheet is, um, it shows the budget across all funds, and you'll see that total revenues for all funds is $54,489,543. That's up from last year. I didn't do the percentage, but it's a good bit up. Um, I got my sheets out of order. Give me a minute. How did I do that? So, okay, the charts show actual numbers through fiscal '23 and then budget numbers for '24 and '25. So in the budget document that y'all got via email, that's the way those documents are also set up. The '24 actuals are estimated, and we base that on nine months of actual expenditures and collections and then 10 years of historical data, and we try to adjust it for any fluctuations that we're expecting. So then, the next chart, chart number one, shows general fund revenue across the years. It's from 2011 through 2025. And we've increased the budget of general fund revenue by almost 1.4 million, which is 8.9%. But a good portion of that is due to revenues have come in strong in '24. So we've estimated collections, for instance, in business license, we estimate our current fiscal fiscal year collections will be 7.7 million, which is already 200,000 over the budget for '24. So that the estimate for '25 is only 5% higher than what we expect to receive in '24. So it's not, even though it looks like we went way up, we didn't really because some of that increase was realized in fiscal year '24. So that was for business license that happened, for property tax that happened. We're estimating property tax in '25 to be 3.4% higher than what we are expecting to collect in '24. And then franchise fees, we're estimating to be 3.9% higher than what we've collected in '24. So even though 8.9% looks like a big, huge increase, it's not really as big of an increase as you might think, just looking at the outside. We've also increased our interest income, 85.5,000 for the general fund. So far in '24, we've collected $311,000 in interest, so the budget for '25 will be less than the current year collection, but it's kind of hard to predict exactly what interest rates we're going to do. And that gives us a little buffer if it comes in a lot higher. So chart number two shows general fund revenue for the year for '25. And you'll see that for franchise licensing permits, 70% of that is business license, and then 23% is franchise fees and 6.5% is our permits, the way they're coming in. Our next pair of charts talks about the general fund expenditures. So chart number three, as the, as the town has grown, you know, revenues have, our expenditures have grown, we have to provide more services to more people. The total bar height is the total expenditures for the general fund, and the navy portion is what we've been spending on police. The green portion is parks. The little peach section is general government, which would include council, administration, court, finance, and planning, building, and technology. And transportation is the brown at the bottom. Chart number four shows how we divide the money for the year, fiscal year '25. 48% is for police. And if you look at the police budget, the budget for police is 8.4 million, but 80% of that is for salaries and benefits, or 6.8 million. Of the remaining general fund expenditures, it's split between parks, transportation, and general government. And parks looks large, 3.6 million, but of that, 37% or 1.4 million is for sanitation and services contract. So then we'll go to the enterprise fund. The next chart, chart number five, shows the enterprise fund revenues and how they've grown over the years. With the great rate increase and the customer growth, we've increased the budget for water and sewer revenue, 1.6 million or 6%. And then on chart six, you can see the revenues for the year, how we've budgeted on, what we expect. Most of this is from water and sewer fees, so 88% of our budgeted revenue is from water and sewer fees that we charge for usage. Chart seven shows another glimpse of the funding sources because even though we have the revenues coming in, we do expect to get some of our funds for the capital improvement plan from cash reserves. So it shows the 7.8 million of cash reserve that we're expecting to spend on capital improvement projects. Chart number eight shows our expenditures over the years. The largest part is capital improvement, that's the dark green. The peach colored is salaries and benefits. The lime green portion is our contractual service costs, and the dark brown shows debt service. So then chart nine shows it for the one-year fiscal year 2025. One thing to note is that the contractual services, 7 million, a good portion or most of that is for our payments to West Columbia for water, which is 2.5 million, and the City of Casey for sewer treatment is 3.5 million. So 6 million of the 7 is for contractual services to pay for water and sewer costs. Then chart number 10, this shows our general fund legal debt margin. Assessed values of property in town grows and the amount of money that we're allowed to borrow without having a referendum increases. And we currently have a $7 million or $8 million bond anticipation note that is, which is funding the Gibson Pond Dam reconstruction, other park and recreation facilities, street and highway improvements, and other government facilities. So that bond will probably be issued in the next year or two. And then chart number 11 shows the debt service coverage ratios for the enterprise fund. Debt service coverage is related to our ability to pay our bond payments after paying all of the operational costs of the system. Our bond ordinances require a minimum coverage amount of 1.2, and for 2025, our total coverage as budgeted is 2.36, and our coverage not including CCS or the operational coverage is 1.86. In '21, there's a bit of a spike, but part of that is, that's the total debt service coverage, and we had a good year as far as CCF revenue coming in, so that makes that number higher. And that's that. So then the last chart shows the position changes. Since 2012, the police department has the highest number of employees with 67, and then the next largest department would be our utilities department that has 50. That's my presentation. If y'all have any questions or anything.
And since Kathy's not here, I'll say it. We should have hired you in the first place.
Thank you, ma'am.
That's a running joke for years.
So we're open to questions. I know we sent out a document with a lot of detail on it, and we're certainly open to any questions you may have.
So Kathy, I want to make sure I understand this correctly, looking on page one. It says that our total budget for 2025 is $54,489,000.
That's total revenue.
Total revenue. Our total revenue of 2023 was 54,465. So we're only increasing about $24,000 in revenue.
And because that's going across all funds, one thing is, under special revenue funds, you can see intergovernmental revenue was 1.8 million. When we got the ARPA funds, we got half of it in '23 and half of it in '24, so those were large years for, that, it was like 5 million each year. So we budgeted, we budgeted the full 5 million even though we weren't able to spend all. So this is how much we've got left to spend of the ARPA funds, is 1.8 million, but that's like a $3 million reduction in revenue just in ARPA funds.
Okay, thank you.
I got one question, Madam Mayor. On chart 10, just for my own clarity, chart 10 where we've got our general obligation legal debt margin. Remind me again of the event that happened between '21 and '22 that reversed.
We basically had pretty much paid down all of our debt, and then in 2022, we issued a bond anticipation note, part of which has been used to pay our portion of the Gibson Pond Dam. So you'll see that's kind of grown just a tiny bit, but that's because we rolled the band each year until we get the projects paid for and completed. Once we issued the final bond, that'll start going back the other direction, but until we issued that bond, it tends to grow just a tiny bit. But that's the difference between '21 and '22, we issued that bond anticipation note, which was close to $7 million.
Right. So, but the, the debt that's contemplated in this chart is, I mean, it's all-inclusive debt. It's bands and long-term bonds, correct?
Right. Right. But right now, the general fund has no long-term bonds. The only thing we have in the general fund is the bond anticipation notes.
Okay.
And that's that one issue.
And, and so what, what event is going to trigger converting these bands to a long-term bond?
When we finish the Old Mill Trail, I believe. Is that right, Stuart?
Right. We're, we've got a few hundred thousand dollars left in that project fund from that bond issuance. We will look to expend that, and we may be able, it probably would be good to go ahead this year and go long-term. So that's what we're looking to do. This did pay for the Gibson Pond Dam. It paid for the, reimbursed us for the costs associated with the pavilion. It's paid for costs associated with Virginia Hilton Park and a few other things. So that's where you get to that dollar amount. We, we will likely refund it long-term this year. It kind of depends on where the market looks with interest rates.
Got it.
So what this tells us is that we have the ability, right now, to borrow almost $4.6 million without going out for a referendum because it's the 8% of our assessed value is how that's calculated.
I will tell y'all, if y'all are looking on the proposed budget highlights, if y'all are okay with it, discussing it with Rachel, the town topics to be mailed to customers not in town was so high to print and do everything. I think it was $28,000, $26,000, $28,000, and I've asked her to remove that. I mean, they can sign up for emails if they want to get the town topics, and we can send it to them that way instead of spending that money to mail it to you. Now, in town, I want us to still mail it to you, but not.
If they want it that way, yeah.
Yes. Depending on how they get it.
So I have a question on some of the highlights, and this is my first time looking at budget stuff, obviously. Is it normal, do every budget we have a rate increase of the water and sewer? Is that a normal thing?
So I'll tell you how we handle water and sewer rate increases. We have traditionally done them over a, over a period of time, usually a five-year period. This goes back 25 years. That's in order so that we're not hitting folks with massive rate increases at one time. I talked to another city this week. They had a consultant propose a 50% rate increase, and they're looking at doing 25%. So we're thankfully not in a position like that. What we do is we hire a firm about every five years that analyzes all of our operations and what we're projected to do over the next 10 years, including our debt and our capital projects. And we come up with a plan to assure that we have sufficient funds coming in to meet our legal obligations to our bondholders, to have funds for operations, et cetera. And we adopt the rates as conservatively as we can over a period of years, and generally, over the last 25 years, in the off, we have an off year, a sixth year, where we do the study again and evaluate, reevaluate where we are. So hopefully in a couple of years, we're going to have a holiday, so to speak, from rate increases. But the pre-adopted rate increase is 3.5% this year, 3.5% next year, and then we'll be back to reevaluation.
So did we have one last year?
Yes.
It was three and a half?
We're in year four of five, as I recall.
Okay. So it's just incremental every single year?
Yes.
It's based on, it's based on the, the plan in those five-year chunks. What was it, about four or three years ago we did it? Was it in Orangeburg, if I vaguely recall?
Yeah, we talked about it there, and we've, we've worked with an analyst over the years. They do a good job of working with us to, to, to make sure that those coverage numbers that you see are important. Our minimum coverages on the operating side are hover around 1.9%, 190%, 1.9. That's where you need to be in that range in order to maintain the current credit rating that we have. And so that's one of the metrics that we keep in mind as we go through that process.
And is that the same metric used for like the permit increase, the 3.4? Is that the same kind of thing with that?
So that dates back to a few years ago where we had a fairly lengthy discussion about permits and whether we need to raise the permit rates. And we finally settled on a certain number, the council did, and the directive to staff was, we should be adjusting these rates annually, much like we do water and sewer, so we're not having to deal with huge increases at any particular time. And so we've, we've tied that to the CPIU, all urban customers. That's where the 3.4% comes from.
And then, Will, are you, you want me to guide you to something else?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Do you have another question, or?
No, that was the first thing that jumped out at me. I thought we were all just asking.
Okay. Rachel, do you want to speak about, I spoke about the printing for that that we looked at and the 3% or 3.5% for a credit card?
Madam Mayor, in 2001, we, we began adding a lot of customers who were paying by electronic means, and we wanted to prioritize folks paying electronically, paying with bank draft in order to, to minimize the amount of staff that we have to employ to process payments. And so we've employed that staff, and we've gotten a substantial number of our customers that pay this, this way. That is good. We always knew that there is a downside for us absorbing the cost of the, the credit card fees. The downside is particularly when someone's paying a tax or a, a fine or some kind of license. In effect, other folks are subsidizing the payment of a tax, at least by that minimal amount that they're using the credit card to pay that for. But that was judged to be something that was, that unfortunate circumstance was judged less important than getting the economies and efficiencies of having people involved in electronic payment. Move forward many years, the use of credit cards is fairly ubiquitous, and you may have noticed that a lot of folks are beginning to charge convenience fees, whether you're at the restaurant or they have a differential at other locations. And the reason we particularly looked at it is the, the magnitude of the dollar amounts have changed, and so it's something that council needs to address because it's a policy decision. This is not a staff decision. Y'all decide how you want to handle this. But for example, for hospitality tax, people paying their hospitality tax by credit card, the town absorbed $22,300 in credit card fees last year. For e-commerce, which is basically all of our utility payments, $250,000. Miscellaneous payments at the front desk, could be anything, $37,000. Someone will have to remind me what IVR is. That's the phone.
That's the telephone.
Telephone. People calling in on phone and paying $18,000 in fees. And folks, you know, the credit card companies, we all know that they offer a lot of rewards and incentives, and some of the cards charge, pass along part of that cost to us in addition to a standard kind of fee. And so over the years, we've paced, we've placed certain limits. For example, capital contribution fees, we basically, a number of years ago, if I'm remembering correctly, said, if it's greater than $10,000, we're not going to accept a credit card. But people find a workaround with that. They have, you know, several cards in their pocket. So we bring to you this issue for you all to give us direction. Do you think that we should look to implement a convenience fee for where it's applicable on credit card payments to the town?
I would not call it a convenience fee. I'd simply let it, like GoFundMe and all these other sites, allow them to select, choose that method of payment, which wouldn't put the cost on them for the use of it.
I do, I do think you need to, if we're going to do this, there would need to be at least a three-month campaign to give them options to where they can have free options that they wouldn't have to pay the 3% and encourage them to do that. I know that I do my bank account a lot of times instead of a credit card because it is free if you do that. So I do that, and I think that's important, that we give them all those options. About how much money is it?
I think it's about 310,000 if I did the math. I'd be in favor of a hard stop, Madam Mayor. I don't think we need to broadcast any kind of campaign. I think people who make online payments will just see that if they want the convenience of the SkyMiles that they're getting, they should pay the convenience or that transaction fee.
Well, I think the only issue with that is that it's, there's automatic payments. So if it's automatic, they might not see that that's automatically added on to it.
We certainly put them on notice that.
And that's what I'm saying. At least give them a little bit of notice and tell them something to where, and when they call in, you can do it this way or this way, and you're going to get a 3% fee. I mean, I talked to somebody today about something, and she said, I'll be charging you if, if we do credit card.
What do other municipalities do?
I can, I know that the county has always charged it because they collect a lot of taxes and from multiple jurisdictions, so that was certainly one of the reasons they do it. I haven't surveyed other municipalities.
And personally, every online payment I make, I typically do a bank ACH draft because I don't want to pay the extra whatever percentage to use a card.
It's charged to the North Augusta. Every municipality's different.
And is this charged just for credit or for credit and debit?
Both.
Both. Any, if it's a Visa or a MasterCard if it's got.
It's electronic track, if it is an electronic check or your routing and account number, we would not charge.
I believe that's correct. There is some, there are some charges that we have from the banks for processing, but it's not the same as.
It's not the same as the credit card fees.
Yeah, the Lexington County, it's like, Richland County, I think I paid a property tax. There's $2 or $1.50. If you do a check, it's, you know, 2.3% of the entire amount if you do a credit card. I'd be in favor of an immediate switch on that.
So Kathy, if you're, if the credit cards are drafting right now for water payments, what we're proposing would actually increase that, those bills as well, just for, so we're having it drafted automatically. what we're proposing would actually increase that, those bills as well, just for, so we're having it drafted automatically. Yeah, I've.
I don't know of that.
I think we need to give them a notice for sure.
Yeah, I'm in favor of giving them some sort of 30 to 60-day notice, just to set expectations.
The amendment is going to take probably 60 to 90 days. So we would have time to give a notice before we actually.
Okay. So. Yeah.
Sorry.
So that can work out that way?
And, and in order, Brad points out correctly that we, we have to adopt an ordinance to charge a fee. And so we can probably do that as part of the budget. But that does, you know, take at least until the beginning of June.
And then your implant, it's going to take from there another 60 days?
Well, I mean, we, we've been talking with Tyler about some other changes we're wanting to do as far as credit card, how credit cards are handled. And as soon as we get that paperwork signed, he said it would take 60, 90 days to get it implemented. And that if we just chose to do convenience fees, it could be part of that process. And so it would be 60 to 90 days, I would say, from May 1st. It would be the quickest we could get it implemented.
Okay, so that gives plenty of time to give all the notification and everything.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
If I may, I just, I, I think we, I'd like to make sure the paradigm here is, is not one that we're all of a sudden charging a fee and all of a sudden taxing people. Like, I do a lot of online transactions. We, we are by far the extreme, uh, exception. Almost everyone else that I do, any kind of online commerce worth makes me pay if I want to use my card. So I'd like to shift away from this, this, this paradigm that we're all of a sudden taxing our people more. That's, that's not working. We're just joining what most every other industry does, which is allows a person who wants to use a card and gain all their SkyPoints and SkyMiles, there, there, there's a small fee associated with that. And we're offering them to use that service if they want to also pay that fee, which we don't collect. It goes to the transaction coordinator. It goes to the credit card processing company. So it's, I'd like us to shift that paradigm because we're not. We've been doing something grossly generous at the expense of taxpayers for a long time now that I'd like to see us shift away from doing as quickly as possible.
Well, and people can still come and pay in cash or check.
They can, exactly.
That's the whole nature of a convenience fee, so that's their decision.
Well, I, I just want to point out too, and I agree with what Councilmember Lyle was saying, but I do think it is important just for us to educate those people. I mean, I think of someone like my grandmother that has her payment on automatic payment. She's on a fixed income. Giving them a heads up so that they can plan, I mean, I think that's really important. Yeah, we've been generous, but I think it is important to give a heads up before we just take that generosity away so that people can, who are on fixed incomes, maybe they're not just using their card for SkyMiles, but maybe they're just using it for a matter of convenience for them to understand that this is going to impact their budget so that they can plan accordingly.
Especially if they have it on a debit card. That's the other thing, is that if it's the debit and the credit together, I guarantee you, there's a lot of people who are on a fixed income that have it on a debit card. And we would, we would need to give them a heads up to make sure.
So how would we do that if, if somebody didn't want to do that, but they wanted it automatically drafted? They would just have to change it in the system as coming out of, um, just give the routing number or that kind of thing or?
I'm not trying to be rude here, but everybody up here, y'all do need to be recognized before y'all just start talking.
Sorry.
Okay. I'm just trying to keep a little order up here, so.
Apologies. Madam Mayor.
Yes. I think Ginny had a question. She was on the floor, so can y'all answer her question first?
I, I will, if, if I'm wrong, they would have to contact us to update their payment methodology. I think there's.
Well, actually with the way the Tyler system is set up, if they want to do, we used to offer the service where we would enter the bank information and draft the checks, but we can't do that anymore. They have to go through the municipal online payments, which is a Tyler process. And they have to do it themselves, but they can do bank draft themselves. Now, if they call and talk to our customer service, we'll be certainly can help them walk through it and tell them how to do it, but they do have to, some of that they do have to do themselves.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Is Tyler our software service?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Okay. Yeah, so I, I would just suggest, I would agree that we don't have to be in a big rush here, that we could send out a clear explanation of how to go from credit card payments to ACH transfer. And people can keep it electronically that way and, and let it be for free. And that would need to be a, a pretty strong campaign. And then after we've done that, we've, we've done what we can do. It sounds like on our best day, it's going to take us 90 days from today to get there anyway. And we can, uh, just move at that pace. And hopefully, you know, people will move to ACH transfer.
And you, um, but we do need to go ahead with the policy.
We can adopt it with the budget.
With the budget, so it can start moving forward.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I wanted to go back to the, uh, mailing out the town topics. I agree 100% with you, but I was curious, how many, are we currently mailing it to out-of-town customers?
No, we're only mailing to in-town customers who receive paper bills. So if you get your bill emailed to you, you get town topics emailed.
Understood.
If you are out of town and you get an email bill, you'll get town topics emailed to you. So the only customer that's missing is out-of-town paper bill.
Okay. So that proposal that we're removing, I guess, that was never implemented. It was a proposal, but we're taking it. Got it, understood.
In an effort to reach a wider audience with Town Communications, that was something that we thought to put up. But the cost of mailing is significant.
Understood.
I would like to ask too, that when they come in to sign up, as new ones come in to sign up, that we do explain you can get notifications of what's going on in the community if you sign up for email.
Yes.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I'd also like to see us go one step further and make the, uh, customers opt into receiving mail thereby defaulting to the email if, if we could. I think that would save us significantly on postage and printing as more and more people do that. I know I received a notice from Kinetic Windstream just about a week ago that told me if I wanted to keep getting a paper bail, I was, bill, I was going to have a two or three dollar increase to my monthly bill because they're now shifting to electronic, which is, I think, a reasonable decision for both the planet and for our budget. I'd like to, I'd like to propose that we shift and do that same kind of default position going forward, obviously gradually over time.
I don't think we charge them yet. I think we just.
No, I'm saying I would like to make someone opt in.
To do it.
To receive mail. If somebody doesn't opt in, then they're getting it electronically until they say otherwise.
But you got to make sure they got the email address and all that stuff too, though.
I think today is.
And, and we heard at utilities, some of that is tough.
So that would be beneficial as well if there's ever an emergency utility notification such as a water outage or anything of the sort, we'd be able to get into, into touch with those.
Anything else? There it is.
No other questions, Mr.?
I'd like to add a couple more things for council to consider. Two other policy recommendations that's related to staff. We've heard from many of our departments that, um, employee recruitment and retention is very important. The first of which would be for positions that are difficult to fill, positions that stay open for a longer period of time, that we have a hard time recruiting for, offering a sign-on bonus. I've done a lot of research. I've received information from multiple departments on what that would look like. That includes both utilities and police, which are really on opposite ends. If you think about it, but they have the same sort of need. And what I'm proposing is, again, implementation with the budget. It would be a policy that I would bring to council to be passed along with the budget, would be a sign-on bonus opportunity for hard-to-fill positions. We would define that internally by positions that have sat open for 60 days or more. We can work through that where if you are a civilian and you're applying for a civilian position, such as a utilities position, you would get a certain amount of a sign-on bonus. I'll give an example, a recommended example of 2,500 dollars. You would receive a certain amount upon hire and then you would receive the remainder after six months of employment. We would have a payback requirement if you were to leave the position within a year that dovetails with an employment policy that we already have in place. If it was for a law enforcement position, if you are currently certified law enforcement officer, your sign-on bonus would be 3,000 dollars. You'd receive a certain portion at sign-on and then the remainder after six months probationary period. So I wanted to offer that up. It's not uncommon for departments across the Midlands or the state to have, um, these type of sign-on bonuses. And I think currently it would benefit the police department and utilities. But in the future, you don't know what will happen in the workforce. There may be an opportunity, um, to fill some parks positions or maybe someone in transportation. It's a nice tool for us to have to utilize as necessary. And we would pay for the bonuses through salary savings. Budgeted. So with council's concurrence, I can bring that policy for your review at the next council meeting. And we can pass it along with the budget and the, um, the transaction charge. Any questions about?
Great idea.
Um, the second one is very similar and it's a, I have to be careful with the name. Employee referral bonus program. So this would be something that all employees would be eligible for. If you currently work for the town of Lexington and you know someone who does not work for the town and you think they'd be a good fit for a department. When they apply, they list you as the referring person for the position. And if that individual is hired, then you as the employee get basically a finder's fee. The first amount would be paid after they've been on, uh, working with us for 30 days. The remainder would be paid after a six-month period. That is specifically for current employees only. The, the sign-on individual would not get anything. And for this particular example, we're looking at 1,000 dollars total, where you would get 200 dollars after they've been employed for 30 days and the additional 800 after six months. We've heard this from both utilities and police actually, um, that their department could benefit from both as some of the best ways to recruit folks in those departments are through friend and network referrals. So you could have someone in the department making a referral. And then the person who signed on would potentially get the bonus.
No, is that for directors too?
It would not be for directors. And you, if you were on the hiring panel for a position, you could not refer someone.
Okay.
That makes sense.
I do want to add that caveat as well. Those are recommendations from our own staff. I don't believe that they colluded at all. They both came up with that separately. So I had them review, um, the policies ahead of time to make sure I was on the right track.
Madam Mayor. I think those are great ideas. I'd like to see us implement them both.
Anything else? Now, if I remember correctly, we don't normally vote to put this on the agenda. It normally just goes.
Correct.
So I guess I don't need motions or anything like that. If anybody, staff have any questions or council have any more?
Listen, Kathy asking that question every year. How many years running, we're not increasing property taxes?
She can call us.
We did have the phone go off.
We did.
Thank you, Stuart. Yeah, thank you, thank you very much.
Stuart, how many years is that, right?
We're, we're at 30, I believe.
30 years of no increase in taxes.
Correct.
I'll make sure Kathy knows.
Yes.
I'm going to talk to the media in a minute, so I'll make sure we tell Kathy on TV.
But just to advise council, um, the next steps, we have our first reading, um, next week at our May meeting. I believe it's May 6th. We will then post for our public hearing, which will be held before our June meeting. So any interested residents could come to our public hearing. We will then take, um, the vote on the second reading of the budget ordinance, the first meeting in June.
And that's when the public hearing is the same day?
Correct. It'll be just before.
I have a question. We, we've determined in discussions with council members over the last year that we want to do some notification on the rates, um, that are being implemented. And, um, if we wait till the, um, budget is adopted and get final reading, we can send that out with the, the, um, bills that go in June. But folks will then see it on the next bill. If, if you all were comfortable, we could do it for two months, just so nobody could say that we were, um, you know, not being as informative as possible.
As part of the transparency and trying to share what's going on. So, y'all, what do you want to do, May and June or?
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't hurt to release information sooner if you can.
Yeah.
So that would be a rate increase effective August?
It will be effective the 1st of July, but it will be on the first bill that they receive in the new fiscal year, which would, would, goes out at the end of July.
Okay, so. Should that? So would that be three months that they would save it or two?
Two.
Okay.
Madam Mayor. Just, just so I'm clear, we're talking about releasing this after first reading? Or are we talking about releasing it right now?
We would do it, um, at, when we send out the bill in May.
Which is?
Is that after?
After first reading.
Is it after first reading?
Right before, um, second reading.
Okay.
Okay.
Perfect.
Anything else? They have no more questions. I'm going to close this.
I'll have a statement. I mean, a comment.
Don't you need to get her home? Didn't you tell her it was time to go?
No, I just wanted to tell y'all how hard Lorraine and Chad worked to get the information to you last week. And I, I think I got the best team in finance that anybody could ask for. And I appreciate their hard work. I appreciate everything they did. And I think y'all need to know how hard they worked. They really went over and above and beyond what I would expect. And I, I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
And that's it.
Thank y'all.
You're here.
And so did all of y'all. And Kathy, I'm sure they were on the phone with you saying this, this, and this.
Well, it was a lot of phone calls and emails and texts and everything else, but it was.
Y'all got it done and we appreciate it. We appreciate you getting it to us ahead of time to where we could look at it.
We threatened to come to her house.
And hang out. She probably would have been okay with that. Okay, so. We have no public, any questions from you? I guess you'll give them to us in a minute. Okay. That concludes our business for this special call work session. Without objection, we are adjourned.